Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees. And I've taken a roll call and we have a quorum of all the, of the full board and a quorum of the elementary board. All trustees are present except trustee Mercer and old person. And I think I see trustee Mercer coming in. So we'll go ahead with the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And trustee Mercer's here. So Agenda item three, we review, revise, and approve the agenda. Do any trustees have any requested revisions to the agenda? Order of things or anything? Seeing none, the agenda stands. Agenda item four, we approve the minutes from our April 26 meeting. They begin on page four of your packet. Are there any trustee comments or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by trustee Walker Andrews, seconded by trustee Wake. All trustees in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Agenda item five is our community connection. And that'll be Brian Boot, Sentinel High School Industrial Arts teacher. And the Skills USA team will present and share their team's progress for the 2021-2022 school year. So if you would like to go ahead.
as well. And so it kind of puts it together. And what we have is we have competitions that are technically based out of all the state. And so why I brought this up today is because we have two of the three students here that placed first in our, for the state, and they will be attending Nationals as well coming up. The national competition, there'll be about 3,000 to 4,000 students participating in that, in the competition. And they're going to be amongst the greatest in the nation, as far as that goes. And so it's something that we can hang our head high on, that we're doing a good job as far as what they're learning and what these students have accomplished through this time. Essentially, the skills national competition will be in Atlanta, Georgia, and that's where these guys will be participating. We have one more, he didn't show up, but of the three, let me get to that, three, the three students are Robert Gutman, which he's not here, and he won for the automotive technology. And he won $18,000 in scholarships and prizes, more than that actually, through that state organization as well. Timothy Walters is a gentleman here on my left, and he was the one that won for computer technology. And then Ethan Braun is for first place in computer drafting and that. So they did a really phenomenal job in the state competition, and like I said, they will be continuing on. So here's some of their photos of them on their, on the winner's stand and stuff, so. And we had about, there was about 280 students that were competing in this competition as well. So they did really well in their perspective areas. And so June 19 through the 25th, we're gonna be in Atlanta, Georgia, with more than 3,000 students and be competing there. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Do any trustees have questions for our group? I have a question. Are you having students from all the high schools, even though it's centered at Sentinel?
Yes, yes, because I do the automotive program, and so I do the district program.
Okay.
And so we have Robert, which is not here, he's the one that's from Hellgate, and these two are from Sentinel as well.
Okay. Any other trustee questions? Trustee Walker Andrews?
I'm just curious, could you just say maybe 15 words about what you actually did at the competition to get first place, what you presented?
So I competed in computer technical. I competed in computer technical skills, which was an IT competition pretty much, so testing my knowledge on IT systems, a little bit of cybersecurity, and some general office maintenance tools.
I competed in the technical drafting competition, where I had to create working part drawings from a client-based drawings and create them into part drawings that like a company could use to produce that part that the client wants.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Lodge?
Well, Mr. Boot, you keep bringing kids back to us doing exceptional work, and we thank you for that, and we really applaud the efforts of these students, all the hard work they've done, and now their accomplishments. So it's pretty incredible. So on behalf of everybody, we thank you very much, and we applaud you as well. Nice work and well done.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is the community, is the public comment. We have correspondence in the packet starting on page eight, and then we have public comment here in the meeting. The public comment is on non-agenda items. We're limited to three minutes per speaker. We need to remember to respect the rights of others and, yeah, so just, I can't remember what I was supposed to say, but anyway, you don't criticize people by name or position. So if you want to come forward and put your name down and, or spell your name for the record.
Hi, this is a little bit scary.
Excuse me, could you sit at the, at the mic so that the MCAT picks it up?
Oh, sit here?
Yeah.
Helena Coell. Hi, is this okay? Okay. Hi, my name is Helena Coell, and I'm a teacher, and I'm also a current parent of a Paxton student. I am here today to voice my support for the Spanish-English dual-language immersion program at Paxton Elementary and to speak in favor of maintaining the pledged amount of instructional time which students receive in Spanish daily. I think that Paxton should continue its dual-language immersion model for three reasons. First of all, the research supports a dual-language immersion model. Research shows that bilingual children have an academic edge, that the bilingual brain is a healthier brain, that it results in slower aging and a higher employment rate, that bilingual children are better prepared for the future in many ways. The USA is going to be the largest Spanish-speaking country by 2050, when my children are adults. Secondly, the data shows that the program is overall working. Throughout the implementation of the DLI, which is the Dual Language Immersion Program, our students have continued to show growth beyond MCPs's ELA and mathematics benchmarks. The students overall are enjoying the program, feeling adequately challenged and motivated, and this has resulted in a measurably higher enthusiasm for their school experience in And thirdly, students, teachers, and parents, for the most part, do support the Spanish immersion program. Most of Paxton's students love the DLI program and are thriving in the diverse culturally rich environment facilitated by their Spanish-speaking teachers. Paxton's, and I think it's 21 excellent Spanish teachers, believe in strong, sound Spanish instruction. They were recruited for that purpose and have put an immense investment of time into fine-tuning all the components within the framework of Paxton's Dual Language Immersion Program. They deserve support from their colleagues and principal, and also from the district. As the school community, it is more critical now than ever to help them in their mission to improve this program, not diminish it by reducing student contact hours in Spanish. Spanish-English teams like Maestro Fox and Ms. Insala have perennially demonstrated a remarkable ability to show the full intended mission of the DLI model with impressive success. Parents overall support the DLI and, but know that its merits need to be communicated and celebrated regularly and clearly. The challenges that the program faces must also be communicated and addressed in order to maintain the program's evolving efficacy. For example, we have heard almost nothing about the Dual Language Immersion Program in the three years we've been at Paxton. No mention of the DLI program, how we can get involved, or support staff in improving it. We had no idea that the program was facing a review, or that staff were currently in need of support in critical areas. I basically found out by accident. We are ready to work with teachers and the PTA to meet staff needs. We understand that COVID-related stresses and learning loss have eroded student, teacher, and parent morale.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Do you want to say your name?
Hola, mi nombre es June. Tengo siete años. Estoy aquí porque me gusta el programa de español en Paxton. He aprendido mucho ahí. Hablar español me ayuda a entender a más personas y a hacer amigos. También es divertido. Gracias por tu tiempo. Hello, my name is June. I am seven years old. I am here because I like the Spanish program at Paxton, and I've learned a lot there. Speaking another language helps me to understand more people and make new friends. It is also fun. Please continue the Spanish program at Paxton. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
My name, my name is Andrea Leeds, and I have a rising second and fifth grader at Paxton Elementary, as well as a sixth grader currently attending Washington Middle School who went through the Dual Language Immersion Program at Paxton. I am here in support of the Dual Language Immersion Program. Missoula County Public Schools tagline is forward-thinking, thinking-high-achieving. The DLI program has been a great example of an attempt to be forward-thinking and high-achieving. It has recently come to my attention that there are proposed changes that would significantly impact our kids. This program has been amazing for our children, despite the challenges of COVID and past trouble leadership at Paxton. Being a Spanish learner has been a source of pride and identity for my children. The most troubling part is that the decision, at least what has been allowed to be known to parents, has occurred without transparency to parents, when previous subcommittees and task force, forces have been used in partnership and have been convened to talk about curriculum and curricular changes within the Dual Language Immersion Program. The metrics currently seem to be based on feelings rather than objective data, which is troublesome. This would be the first year that the Dual Language Program would be at full capacity, 50% at each grade. It is very unfortunate to potentially not let it come to fruition. Kids and families have committed to this program and fallen in love with it. We would like to see Paxton honor its commitment to its students and give students the same kindness, consideration, and respect that it has given to its school all along. My sixth grader tonight, on the way to soccer practice, learned of this potential change, as we all did this afternoon for the first time. My fourth and first graders were super sad and very troubled by it. This is my sixth grade son's writing, just from here to the fort. Over my six years of time in Spanish immersion program, it gave me lots of valuable experiences. I thought it was very cool, and it let me learn new things when I was bored in my other classes. It allowed me to experience part of the other cultures, and it's also a very valuable life skill. I have gone to Spanish-speaking countries, and it was so cool to be able to converse with the people there. I also felt it was so much more fun than all of my other classes. It was the one area of elementary school that made me really want to learn, instead of being focused on getting things right. I was just excited to learn. I spent much of my day bored in English classes, and many of my Spanish teachers really cared if I learned a much, much broader material. To add to that, I feel that learning math and other subjects in Spanish made them more enjoyable. I would feel horrible if my brothers couldn't have these same experiences. I would like the board to consider holding Paxton accountable, to incorporate the greater community as well in both, and that in the care of our kids in the greatest capacity. Stripping this program to the bones would be removing so much from our kids, as well as part of their identity. They are really entrenched in this identity, and they love this process. Once again, I'm in full support of maintaining a true DLI program at Paxton Elementary and full support of reconvening task force and committees that will allow that. There's been some talk about a committee that was formed without taking any consideration of that, and that's just very troublesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I feel like for the five years that I've gone to Paxton, I've felt special because all of my friends that don't go to the school, they tell me what happens at school, what they learn, and they talk about ELA and math, and, and I talk about Spanish, and that makes me feel amazing because I get to learn another language, even though I don't, I'm not Mexican, and I can just, yeah, I can just learn another language, and it makes me feel very amazing. Thank you.
My name is Joe Eaton. I'm a professor and the father of a fourth grade student at Paxton Elementary. I'm here to voice my support for the school's Spanish immersion program. First, I'd like to thank my son's teachers, who are providing him an excellent education in all subjects. I appreciate your hard work and your dedication. There are several reasons why I believe the immersion program should continue at Paxton, and as Pia suggested, you know, perhaps be implemented at other schools as well here in Missoula. First, research suggests immersion programs like Paxton's teach valuable skills beyond simply a foreign language. Studies show that immersion programs, in the act of studying a foreign language, can have cognitive benefits for our children, improving their attention and even fostering their English language reading skills. There are further benefits to the program that are equally, if not more, important to my family. Like all parents, we would like our son to have an education that will prepare him to participate and compete in the multilingual world. Second, we feel that Spanish language education exposes our children to cultures they may not regularly encounter, particularly in a state that so poorly reflects the rich racial and cultural diversity of the United States. For those reasons, as well as my son's five years of positive experience as a student in immersion program at Paxton Elementary, I support a continuation of the program. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Marta, and I am a student at Paxton. And I just want to thank like all the Spanish teachers who teach there, because they've done like a really good job of teaching, and they always have like fun projects for us to do, and like. And I really want it to continue because like sometimes I get bored in my English classes, because I know a lot of English, and, and then I have like the chance to learn Spanish, and that makes school more interesting than it would be if we didn't have Spanish. And. What? And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Mina Diaby, and I'm a student at Paxton. I'm in second grade, and my Spanish teacher is Maestro Ferguson, and my English teacher is Mr. John. I like Spanish because it gives me a challenge, because sometimes English is boring. I want the, I want the Spanish to continue being half Spanish, half English. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Helena's sister and Pia's mom, and my daughter's been going to Paxton for five years, and I just found out yesterday that the program that we love so much might be truncated or is otherwise in jeopardy in some way. And I concur with everybody who's brought up these amazing statistics and reasons why, why Spanish is so important and why a second language is so important. But just on a personal note, I'd like to add to that, that I was an ESL student, and it was so wonderful to learn English, and I ended up getting a PhD and teaching at Stanford and not getting a job at U M. So anyway, here I am, and I just want to say that this was a huge experience in my life to learn another language and to excel at it. And you can never really know what kids are going to benefit from it and what kids are going to have a hard time from it. And I know that there's probably some logistical difficulties and some kids who have learning disabilities and, you know, I get all that, and I believe that Paxton is strong enough and that the Missoula community is strong enough to be able to overcome those and to make sure that everybody has access to education while keeping this amazingly valuable program. So I just think it would be a shame to deny these kids the chance to learn another language, because it made my world much huger, and it's making these kids' worlds so much bigger, and it's already in place. Just fix it if it needs to be fixed, but please don't scrap it, because I think it's great. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Leary. I have two children at Paxton, and I think everyone has just very well articulated a lot of my concerns, but I just wanted to just say, just be another voice to say that I'm a strong supporter of this program and that it's meant a lot to my children. Just on the way over to track, as we were passing by, I was telling my son we were coming to the board meeting, and he said, can I please come? I really don't want to lose that program. He's had such a wonderful experience. He speaks Spanish amazingly, and it's really been an important thing for him. And so I just wanted to share that, and thank you for your time.
I'll go ahead and spell that, it's S-I-N-S-K-I-C-H-O-T-T. I want to thank you for holding public comment. That's more than can be said about some school boards in town right now. I'm a high school science teacher. I have a second grader and a fourth grader at Paxton, and I want to support the cause of keeping forward and continuing the Dual Language Immersion Program as it stands. The research is there. The young brain is wired, pre-wired, for this kind of learning. My family moved here four years ago from Texas, and when I was studying for the praxis, there were two things that really stood out about MCPs. And one of those, Montana-wide, was the Indian Education For All Initiative and Program. The other one was that there was an elementary school, a public elementary school in town that offered dual-language immersion, you know, and was being used as a model. Mr. Halloran said that it was the only public elementary school in the state that offered that. That should be a model for other schools in the state. It shouldn't just be Spanish that we should offer our students. We should have schools offering other languages, French, German. It is such a neat thing to be able to have dinner with my family. My wife and I grew up in Spanish-speaking Texas. We have rudimentary Spanish-speaking skills, but for our children to be able to sit at the dinner table and carry a full conversation in fluent Spanish with us is unbelievable. You know, five, six nights a week, we sit around the table, and our entire conversation is in Spanish, and that's because they have entered through this program and have learned so much. My son last year, as a third grader, was correcting my grammar. When I come across a word that I don't know, I can say to my daughter, ¿Cómo se dice cherry en español? And she can tell me. It's unbelievably empowering for them, and that's ultimately what we want for our students, for the next generation coming up, is an empowered generation, a generation, you know, how cool is that, that they can speak to us and teach us things as adults at such a young age and feel that empowerment? That's the kind of generation we want to be raising and encouraging. Please, please, involve the parents in this decision. Involve the parents in this process. As you can see tonight, I think, there's, there's a lot to be said, and there are many of us that are willing to be part of this process and engage in it. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna spell it for you, it's gonna be tough.
I appreciate that.
My name is Soazig Lebion. The first name is Soazig, S-O-A-Z-I. The first name is Soazig, S O A Z I G. And Lebion, you would pronounce Lee-Bi-han. It's L E space B I H A N. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your work. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I fully support everything that has been said up to now. What I wanted to add is that I understand that the board asked for the review of the program, of the dual immersion program. I understand that it was found that there is frustration and conflict within the school and I understand that there has been a process of consensus building to find solutions and I found this all wonderful. What I would worry about is that since this process started in February and it's May already, and as I understand, and maybe I'm mistaken about that, the solution is supposed to be found by the end of the school year, then what I worry about is that all that work to find a solution is going to be kind of not lost, but a bit wasted when the solution that has been found on the basis of a, you know, long hours of consensus building process is going to be brought to the parents and the parents discover the whole idea and they haven't been involved. They don't know what's going on. They don't know what the problem is. And I worry that the board is going to find themselves with with parents unhappy for not being involved. We learned about this whole thing by chance and you can see that in the community at large was warned today and people are showing up. I think that largely the process would be better if all the stakeholders were involved. And that's us and we are willing to be involved. We are willing to help and if there is anything we can do to help with this process, to help the teachers, we care about this. As an anecdote, I have a daughter who went through the whole process. She's in seventh grade in Washington right now and I have a second grader. My daughter is conversational in Spanish and my kids, because my husband and I speak German, when we don't want the kids to understand what we say, they speak French, but they can't speak German. My kids speak Spanish when they don't want us to understand. Because we don't speak Spanish. So it's, there's really beautiful, valuable things happening in families when we can hide from each other with various languages. Joke aside, it's been incredible to see my kids being able to speak another language and be so easily learning those languages. It's, they're just sponges. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Carol Ann Sowerby. Thank you for your time. I'm not going to produce all of the various stories that everyone has explained here tonight. I want to make sure that you guys know that I am also, my family, my husband, my two kids, who are currently second and third graders at Paxton Elementary, we're all in support of the dual language immersion program. One thing that I can contribute that I think was mentioned by Steven, I am involved with a lot of incoming community members with my work and every time I mention the fact that we have a public elementary school with a dual language immersion program, I've yet to find someone who's not just blown away by that. It's private, right? No, it's a public school. And I think that really sets ourselves apart, not only from the elementary schools, just within Missoula, but within the state and potentially nationally. I think that we should continue to keep this program for all of the reasons that you've heard tonight and so I don't have to have that conversation with my kids either when I tell them it's going away. Thank you.
Are there any other?
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Combe. I've been teaching in public education since the late 1990s and I'm the daughter of a Spanish teacher from Washington State. I currently have a second grader at Paxton and of course, my family is delighted that we have a public dual immersion program here in Missoula, Montana. I teach art education at the university and art, very similar to foreign language, is an area that often gets cut when there are budget issues or when there are other issues of equity. And I just want to plead with the board and remind the community that these programs, as you all well know, take years to build, hours and hours of deliberation and consensus making and fundraising and hiring. And I think that the decision to alter the program in some way should be given great consideration, lots of input from all of the key players and also the teachers as well. I don't know how the teachers are feeling about the program and I think that that is of the utmost importance that they feel supported as these changes are made. I know too, that with the pandemic, all educators, including and the entire world, is exhausted right now. At the university, we're having higher rates of mental challenges, grades are sliding and I know that all staff members and administrators are also struggling with this two-year-long process of fatigue. So I would love it if this decision could be spread out over a longer period of time after we get some rest after the summer. And I also just want to put my two cents in regarding the fact that language changes our perception. It changes the way we actually view our current reality. And in a world where we're working for equity, diversity and inclusion, I think that language should be put at the forefront of our mission as educators and as public servants. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jenica Anderson and I came to learn just as much as I came to comment. I heard from hearsay, more or less, that this program, the Spanish language program at Paxton was under the threat of being changed or removed and I didn't understand it. It's not something that made a lot of sense to me. I have a first grader at Paxton who has really enjoyed learning Spanish, the way he lights up and is proud of his capability and the confidence he has when he's saying something that I, I don't know yet. I grew up in an area where there was a lot of Spanish speakers. I grew up outside of Los Angeles and I know some, but to know that he feels proud and competent and has confidence from that aspect is so powerful. I have also written down a few of the points that I think are very compelling for preserving this program. Children who learn dual languages have greater language acquisition entirely, including with English or their native language. They earn higher salaries in their jobs. They have better job skills from it. They have higher levels of confidence, as I mentioned, my son has, from being competent in ways. They have a greater ability for empathy as they can bridge the gap of what is human tendency to other people who are not like us, who do not resemble us, who speak a different language. Spanish is the second most common language spoken in the world and it is a romance language where students who learn Spanish, they will learn the roots of the other romance languages. That includes French and Italian, Portuguese and Romanian, as well as the Latin roots of Spanish or science words. If we're talking about increasing STEM programs or the strength of STEM programs, having kids have a deep understanding of the Latin roots of that is only going to help. So having Spanish fluency opens up an enormous number of doors, but also increases the richness of their lives by having them have greater opportunities for empathy for others. They can have compassion for people who are different for them. They have flexible thinking and higher levels of creativity. They can have positive attitudes towards cultures that are different than their own and improved reading and writing skills for their native language and perform better on standardized tests. These are all very compelling arguments. I'm not sure at all what is being discussed in terms of changes proposed for this program, but I would like to echo what some of the previous speakers have said and that is, please allow us, the stakeholders, the ultimate stakeholders, to be part of the solutions and part of the evaluation process. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darby Thompson. I am a father of a sixth grader who graduated from Paxton last year and a fourth grader currently attending the school. Hate public speaking, so I'm sorry about this. But it is a meaningful program. It's been incredibly meaningful to my family, to my children. I just wanted, you know, I don't know how much you hear from the parents regarding the success or failure of this program or what we're seeing and I would just say that for my family, it's been a massive success and my children's confidence in the language and their education in general has been something special to watch. It has been a very trying few years. I think we're all looking for ways to kind of tie things up and move forward and hurdles ahead of us maybe look higher than they would have if we hadn't had such a trying couple of years and we're looking for easy ways to navigate those hurdles and get maybe around them and not do, you know, not go up and over them like we did in the past. So I'm hoping that this isn't, if this decision goes through to eliminate the program or dilute it in some major way, isn't just one more example of us trying to move forward and not deal with these things. So I really thank all of you. I can't imagine what you folks have been through, holding this community together. Things have been really divided, so I appreciate it and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Bye.
Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Agnes Thompson. Yes. I would just like to support the program as well. Everything that has been said, I absolutely support, so I'm not going to repeat those points. I just wanted to also say how incredibly important this program has been for our children, a fourth grader and a sixth grader. It has been really a point of pride and just part of their identities going through this They have absolutely been thriving in school and it's been just amazing to watch. So I'm really hoping that we can find a solution to continue the dual language immersion program and yes, we would, I'd be happy to be as helpful as possible, support, so whatever we can do, yeah, we would love to. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Carrie Zahn and I just want to say thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to talk to you guys. I am a proud product of Missoula County Public Schools. I went to Lewis and Clark. I went to Washington. I had Mr. Lodge as my teacher in sixth grade and I went to Sentinel. And as one of the other people said, in Sentinel, I started taking French and that literally changed my life. And that was just a one-period-a-day class. So for my children, both of them talked, this has been like a life-changing experience. And they both pick up things really quickly. So as they said to you, sometimes school isn't challenging for them, but learning Spanish always provides a challenge, which is something that's really great and not every kid gets that opportunity. I know there's a lot of kids at Paxton who are in that same boat. So I think Spanish provides an added rigor to the program. I'm just very proud that we even have this program in Missoula. Like I just think it's amazing that it exists. The only thing that I'm sad about is that as parents and students, we should have a place at the table. And I know it's been kind of said by the administration that this isn't something that the school board will deal with, but I think it should be something that is done together. Like I don't think it should just be something done in isolation. If they're going to change the program, I think parents, students, everybody needs to have a place at the table. I think that's really important. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your hard work because I know it's been a hard two years and you guys are really supportive, so thank you for that.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for your input. Our next agenda item will be recognitions and Dr. Rob Watson is on the Zoom. He will provide the recognition of our student trustees for the 2021-2022 school year and Russ Lodge will deliver the certificates. So you want to go ahead, Rob? Yeah, we can hear you good.
Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Thanks.
Thanks.
So, Rob, just so you know, Annalise from Big Sky is here with us tonight, and Aubrey from Willard is with us as well. And I just handed those two certificates of appreciation and would echo your comments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you to the student trustees. And our next agenda item is the, are the student trustee reports. So let's start with Aubrey. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve on the board. I've enjoyed my time so much, and I've learned a ton about how a school board works. It's been very exciting. And so for my report, Big Sky just had their prom, and it was amazing. It was located at the barn on Mullen, and the grand march was held at Big Sky. We had a great turnout, and the weather was great. We are planning for graduation on Saturday, June 4th at 12:00. We will also be hosting our annual awards breakfast on Friday, June 3rd, where seniors that have earned awards and scholarships will be celebrated. Big Sky is planning for another year of summer programming. With our Title I money, we are able to help students recover credits to get back on track for graduation. The summer session will run from June 13th to July 21st. Spring activities are coming to a close with the postseason on the horizon. Missoula will host divisionals for track, tennis, and state softball, as well as state tennis. Big Sky will have, will hold its annual, or Big Sky held its annual spring sign event and had nine future collegiate athletes attend, along with family and friends. Big Sky also hosted its first assembly of the year to celebrate athletics and activity accomplishments. It was very well received, and we will host another one for each of the seasons in the coming years. Summer is looking amazing for Big Sky with open gyms, camps, and a universal workout each day for all current and incoming athletes. Thank you.
Okay, now, thank you very much. And Aubrey, you want to go ahead?
First off, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity.
Can you move your mic right up next to you?
Can you hear me better?
Pull it forward.
Better? Okay, sorry. To start off, Willard had our prom this past Friday, May 6th. I would like to offer special thanks to Ms. Joanne Boils, Ms. Shanae Healy, our flagship coordinator, Ms. Melissa Madsen, our fit coordinator, and Ms. Alexi Rumel, all of whose determination, passion, and efforts, along with the contributions of our wonderful student volunteers and art students, played a pivotal role in the realization of this event. They truly captured the magic of our enchanted forest theme, making the venue absolutely beautiful for our prom. The surplus of cherished memories made would not have been possible without them. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge the impressive achievement made by our student body this past learning block, as they've set this year's record for the highest number of individuals earning a place in the honor roll or higher at our school. It is wonderful to see this reflection of the students' dedication and hard work. Additionally, on the point of dedication, to conclude the 2021-2022 school year, Willard will be graduating over 85 individuals. A commencement ceremony will be held on June 2nd at the Music Recital Hall on the University of Montana campus to celebrate these students' accomplishments and achievement in their, and advancement in their lives. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Lodge will read the report from the Hellgate trustee.
Brogan could not be here tonight, but he turned in this report. So a group of AP students has started a fundraiser for Ukrainian internally displaced peoples. They decided to use a combination of raising money and collecting gently-used board games for kids to play in shelters. They're having a bake sale on May 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th at lunchtime, right outside the front office. So bring your board games and your money for yummy baked goods to help kids in need. Student government spearheaded a very successful week of teacher appreciation. Flowers were available for purchase for teachers and were handed out with a personal note to them. Student government also provided breakfast to the staff and assembled a video to show teachers just how much Hellgate students appreciate them. Hellgate saved, put together a wildly successful Earth Week for Hellgate, daily activities along with educational opportunities throughout the week. Activities were highlighted by the Trash-In Show, which showcased the insane creativity of Hellgate students and their efforts to turn trash into some awesome pieces of clothing. Spring sports nearing a close, and athletes are preparing for postseason competition. Track has a city meet this Thursday with divisionals and state coming up. Softball has two weeks left of games in the regular season. Tennis will be having its last two meets this week before they prepare for the postseason, and Hellgate Club lacrosse teams getting ready for state. Seniors are hard at work preparing for the end of the year. Yearbook is assembling photos from the Class of '22's time at Hellgate to put together a slideshow. Student government is planning the senior breakfast, which will be held 10 days prior to the graduation ceremony. Many students are in the midst of testing for their high-level classes. AP and IB begin on May 2nd, various tests until the 19th. There is a plethora of art being shown by Hellgate students at the High School Art Show at South Gate Mall, which will run until May 15th. Potter puff football sign-ups and preparations are underway, and there will be four teams from Hellgate this year, games being held on June 1st at the MCPS Stadium. The Hellgate student newspaper, The Lance, recently attended the U of M High School Journalism Day. Students participated in workshops held by U of M professors and received 12 awards. And The Lance was awarded first in the state for their print newspaper, their online publication, and the Joust podcast. And finally, student government elections are being held this week. Sophomore, junior, and senior class officers, as well as student body officers. Thank you.
All right, thank you for reading that, and thanks to everyone for their reports. Our next agenda item will be announcements from superintendent, from Superintendent Dr. Watson or Russ?
I'll let Russ discuss briefly what's going to happen at the next meeting on May 24th.
So we'll need a quorum of the board, because at 5:30, we're going to canvass the votes from the recent election, and that will be the existing board. So the county elections people will be here, and will canvass the votes for us, make the presentation. And then after that, that meeting will end. And then at 6 o'clock, we will seat the new board members. And then probably the next, not that I need to tell the board what to do, but you'll have to reorganize, and you'll have new members and away you go. So in general, Rob, is that it? There's any reason we can't just tag this? Anything else I left out?
No, that was all. I just wanted the board to be aware of what was coming up at the next meeting. The other, the other thing that will happen that evening is the Board orientation session with Via Coliva. So we will likely keep that agenda pretty light, just because that orientation session takes a lot of power.
In addition, I just want to inform the board on a separate issue that the high school science materials and that whole process you have, we've come to a conclusion of what we'd like to present. We're not going to present to you until after the board has reorganized. Otherwise, this board would be hearing information tonight, and then we'd have to, we have new people next week. So we will present to you with our process in the first meeting in June and bring together all the information that we've collected. I would like to make it public, though, that the materials that we have selected are now in the Learning Center in our Curriculum Department for review. So the public has, will actually have about two months, if they choose to use it, to go and review materials. Two of the high schools selected one publisher, another high school selected a second publisher. And so we have some documents for people to use, so they can go through and do some checkmarks and some comments. So that, I know that Tracy will broadcast that to our general community as well. But that is now for public comment, and I wanted to review, and I wanted to make that announcement tonight so we could get that process started. So we'll, we'll be back to you first meeting in June with the high school work that we've done this year on the science side. And that kind of wraps up our report.
Okay, thank you. And now we move into old business. And the first item is finance operations and maintenance. It's the Cold Springs Missoula Early Learning Center lease. This will be an elementary board action item. Dr. Watson and Pat McHugh.
All right, thank you. I'll just talk briefly about this. We talked about it last meeting. We, as you know, have a lease of a portion of the Cold Springs property to the Early Learning Center. That lease is in default. The agenda item for the previous board meeting was to discuss the notice of default. And in the interim between the agenda setting and the meeting, we received a request from the tenant to terminate the lease. And so the recommendation tonight from administration is that we, that we agree to mutual termination of the lease. That has legal significance that the board should understand. Specifically, the agreeing to terminate the lease means that we forego the ability to relit the premises and collect from any subsequent tenant the portion of the unpaid rent or unpaid obligations from the defaulting tenant. And it doesn't mean that the obligations up to the date of termination are waived. They remain intact until waived by the board. But it means that we retake possession, and we then forego any collection from the tenant through the remaining term of the lease. The lease runs through 2029, so we would forego any rent through that period of time. But that does mean that it opens the door for different uses of that property under your authority as trustees. Happy to answer any questions.
Any trustee questions? Okay, seeing none. The administration recommends trustees agree to termination of the lease, thereby foregoing the payments due under the terms of the lease from May 10th through the end of the term of the lease. This action does not relieve leaseee from the amount owing prior to May 10th. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Mercer, seconded by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous for the elementary trustees present. Our second item is permission to award the replacement of the HVAC dust collection system for the Hellgate High School welding classroom. This will be a full board action item. And we'll get a presentation from Burley McWilliams.
Yeah, thank you. We received, this last week, we received three bids for this project. As we've seen with most things, the price did come in a little higher than we had expected in what we had budgeted. As you remember, the budget for this project was being funded with permissive levy for fiscal year 2023, which would be next year, for the building reserve permissive levy. And then also, we had, you had approved a couple, two board meetings ago, to use building reserve carryover so that we could start this project right away, given that there's some time constraints with receiving the equipment to get the project up and going, so that we can have class in there in the fall. The project low bid was $616,500, which is about $225,000 over budget. And we're proposing that we utilize ESER funds to cover those remaining costs.
Any trustee questions for Burley? Go ahead, Grace.
Sorry, it might be more of a question for Pat. Just can you remind us of what the remaining ESER funds looks like? Like, what percentage of what remains to the district would $225 represent?
You bet. So I don't have an exact number, but the, the previous allocation or a report that, that Rob made to the board showed the beginning allocation at $28.5 million was our allocation. And then we were planning to use about $6.5 million over the next two fiscal years. So that would be through 20, the expenditure date of 2024, September or December 2024. So at this point, it's, it's, it's those funds that are set aside for 2023 and 2024, so approximately $15 million.
Grace, it's about 1.5% of the remaining funds.
Trustee Mercer?
Burley, last time there were some other options you looked at, I think, and this was the most cost-effective. Does this being higher, though, is it that other things would be also higher? And so this doesn't change which one is the best choice, this new $225?
Yeah, and part of the process will be that we do what's called value engineering, where the engineer kind of goes back and looks at whether, how we can change equipment. Can you look at using less? So this is welding, so you have welding booths. So could we do with eight welding booths instead of 14 or 15? So we'll go back and look at some of those. So there's still some potential cost savings involved.
Trustee Decker?
I'm sorry if I just missed this in here somehow, but what accounts for that big of a discrepancy between what we thought and what it came in at? Is it just like everything's more expensive in 2022? Or is it that, I'm just, I'm just curious what kind of accounts for that? And wondering if we waited, would the cost go down? Like, what the trade-offs might be around some of that? This feels like an expensive year.
Yeah, I don't know a lot of, other than prices are just kind of volatile right now and not knowing what to expect. So before we went into the project, you know, we talk with the engineer. We kind of give them our estimated budget, and they design a project to it. So we go off some of their, their recent history. But even then, they're still sometimes not correct. It's, it's just depending on, you know, the, the supply and demand of how to get the supply. I know one thing is with the part that we're ordering, it's kind of already on hold for the dust collector, and it's being held in kind of like an emergency-type purchase for schools that they, this particular vendor allows. So, so I don't have a lot of detail other than just kind of the comment. We don't, we don't exactly know why things, this is supply and demand, and just trying to keep up with those prices. And what was the second part of your question? Okay.
Trustee Walker Andrews?
I'm sure you wouldn't be proposing that we use ESER funds if we couldn't use ESER funds. But what are the limitations on how you can use those funds?
Yeah, so HVAC systems are really a specifically delineated use of ESER funds. And so some of the language that I highlighted were to upgrading projects to improve the indoor air quality in school facilities, including HVAC systems, school facility repair and improvements to reduce exposure to environmental health hazards and support student health needs. So it, we haven't had many projects or upgrades that we use ESER funds for. We've had primary uses that are related to learning loss, social-emotional learning, and then support for hygiene and both staff and students. So this is one of those few purchases that are related to an upgrade. And definitely HVAC systems are mentioned throughout the guidance for ESER uses.
And I have a question, Burley. You might have told us before, but is the availability of welding at Hellgate being reduced because of the current system?
It currently is right now because of the protocols we've put in place to try to keep the air as clean as we can in there, opening up doors. And we have some air scrubbers in there. But part of that plan has been that the teacher's letting less kids weld at one time, so that we don't have all these welding booths going at the same time, correct? And then one thing I'll also add, because this is important, and a lot of questions came up during our bond projects, is all three of these bids were within about $20,000 of each other. So it wasn't like there was a giant discrepancy in the bids. They were really close.
Okay, are there any other board questions? So the administration recommends trustees award Sapphire Mechanical with the replacement of the HVAC dust collection system for the Hellgate High School welding classroom, pending successful negotiation of a contract, and the use of ESER funds to cover the excess cost. That second part of the contract is actually written up above, but we always include that. So do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, just all trustees present. We move on to new business, personnel negotiations and policy. And so our first item will be to approve the personnel report. This is a full board action, and a presentation by Dave Rodd.
Hi, so this month is our annual large personnel report. So in addition to the regular items that you would see, resignations, terminations, and retirements, this one also includes the listing of all of our tenured and non-tenured teachers and administrators and puts out for renewal or non-renewal of those people. So tonight, what will be before the board at both the elementary and the high school level will be renewal of the tenured renewed, non-tenured renewed, as well as non-tenured, non-renewed. So a lot of stuff there. But we're required interstate law to provide written notice to them prior to June 1st of our election. So if we do not do so by June 1st, they would automatically be reelected for the next year. So this year, we do have, like I said, there's quite a long list in there. But it shows you how many people we have working for us in our district, in both the certified, in that certified area. I'd be happy to answer any questions people might have.
Is there any trustee questions for Dave Rodd on the report, but not on specific personnel? Trustee Havant?
I was just curious about, there's a lot of, you know, administration positions changing around next year, and I was just wondering how hiring is going for replacing, like, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and...
Several of the people actually are showing up in this board report. We've been...
Okay, I didn't see that.
Yeah, being this extensive of a board report, it can, can be buried in there. But yes, and they've actually progressed extremely well. Where we've hired new principals for Chief Charlo Hawthorne, Assistant Principals at Sentinel, and Assistant Principal at Meadow Hill. We're going to be undertaking Assistant Principal at Porter. And we have other positions open, as you know, that are currently posted. So been really well, been done really well so far.
Been busy.
Very busy.
Thanks.
Any other trustee questions? Okay, seeing none, and Mr. Lodge has reminded me, this is actually two decisions. So the first will be the elementary board... So the first will be the elementary board only. The administration recommends trustee approval of the items on the provided elementary personnel report. Do we have a motion from trustee Havens? Do we have a second? Just, trustee Decker? So are there any comments on the motion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, all trustee, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the personnel report, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present.
Trustee Lenz, and I have to abstain.
Oh, and trustee Abgarrus has abstained. Thank you. Secondary recommendation, the administration recommends trustee approval of the items on the provided high school personnel report. Do we have a motion from a high school trustee? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Walker Andrews. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous, as all trustees present. Thank you. And then we'll approve wage salary increases for summer and seasonal positions. Again, this with Mr. Rodd.
Hi, this, I'm coming to you today with some recommendations for wage increases for our seasonal workers. These are the ones that individuals have worked for us just from, I think, basically in April through the end of the summer. So what we're proposing are the rate increases that you see in the board report. The one thing I would want to make sure I point out to the board is that the majority of those positions are filled with MMCEO members during the summer. And if that's the case, they're actually paid in column D, which is where these jobs fall, at their current rate. So their rates would actually be substantially different and higher than these rates that are before you today. So these would be for the non-MMCEO members that are applying for seasonal positions.
Okay. Do you have any trustee questions? Still processing that one. Vicky?
Okay, just out of curiosity, I see that the seasonal lawn care worker, what, what is it that they do is, and the seasonal lawn trimmers, they're both the same in the driver, the seasonal driver mowers, a higher wage. I was just wondering how, how that's determined? I mean, as far as it's, it's lawn work.
It's based on responsibilities, and I actually have our person here tonight who might even be able to explain the differences in those jobs, but it is something that, that we have discussed.
Yeah, Dave's right. So the drive, the mower, we're driving trailers around, using heavy equipment, a little more responsibility, a little more important, a little more responsibility for the project, the job.
Okay, I was just, because my husband and I, we do this, and I just wondered why he would get paid more than me.
Do we, do we have, do we have any more comments on the motion? Let's leave Vicky's issue alone. Trustee Abgarrus?
Dave, remind me, how much did we increase last year for these positions?
I actually could tell you, specifically, last year, the rates were at $11 an hour. So actually, in the 2020-21 year. So last year, we raised it from 1250, which is showing there. So let's say, for example, the seasonal lawn care worker, two years ago, it was $11, and we moved to 1250, and then we moved up to the 14 this year.
Okay, and any other questions? Trustee Mercer?
What do we do with food in the summer? And if these don't fill the positions, will you come back for a higher rate? I mean, 1250 is not very much at the present.
That's correct. But like I said, these positions almost always fill with the MMCEO members. So we have a lot of people who switch jobs during the summer and take on these additional responsibilities.
What is food in the summer?
I'm glad I came tonight, Dave. So we, we do have summer feeding programs at a number of our schools and, and Russell, Hawthorne, Lowell, Franklin. So they're actually very, very busy. We do a lot of food, food in the summer.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion? The administration recommends trustee approval of the raise in hourly rates for the summer and seasonal positions as outlined above. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Havens. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. Our next, one, two, three, four topics are to approve the learning programs for the various program, the calendars, yeah. So, Mr. Rodd, if you want to present them all at once or, or group them, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just give a quick overview. So these are the last, these are the last four calendars for next year. The early kindergarten and the Jefferson preschool ones are very similar, as you'll see. And I, and the Sealy Swan is a little bit different because of their four-day week. And the Willard Alternative High School looks exactly as the high school one, but with different blocks in terms of when terms are ending. All of these calendars correspond with what we have done with the other calendars in terms of breaks, winter break, spring break, et cetera. You'll note that the early kindergarten and Jefferson preschool actually do start later after Labor Day and end earlier, but the required hours for those programs are significantly less than we would have for our others. This is still at the 7:20. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I have Burley here to help.
Are there any questions for Dave on any of the four calendars? Okay, seeing none, I think we'll vote them one at a time. The first one, approve the early kindergarten learning program calendar is an elementary action item. And the administration recommends that trustees approve the early kindergarten learning program school year calendar for 2022, 2023. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Abgarrus, second by trustee Decker. Are there any comments on the motion or discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. The next one is also an elementary item for Jeff, to approve the calendar for the Jefferson preschool program for 2022, 2023. Any, do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Abgarrus, second by trustee Decker. Any discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor of the approving the calendar, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous, as all trustees present. We'll wait for trustee Vogel to get back, and now we're going to do Sealy Swan. So this is a full board action item. The administration recommends that trustees approve the Sealy Swan High School 2022, 2023 school year calendar. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Gale, second by trustee Vogel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? All trustees in favor of the motion to approve the calendar, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. And finally, we'll approve the Willard Alternative School high school calendar. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Abgarrus. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of approving the Willard calendar, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. And now we move on to teaching and learning, and we have an out-of-country travel request. And Mr. Lodge will present.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Christie, who's sitting at the back there very patiently, to come on up to the mic, if you would, Christie. And Christie works, one of our very dedicated teachers at the Ag Center, and Christie's put together a really nice proposal for her kids to make a, a trip of significance. They're out of the country, so the board needs to approve it. And Christie, I would love it if you'd spend some time and really kind of detail a little bit. And I know there's information in the back, but I know they'd like to hear from you about all the potential of this trip. So thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, yeah, thank you for having me. So we, out at the Ag Center, we do a lot of different things, and we're talking about how, what are more experiences that we can give to our students. And some of the other programs across, agriculture programs across the state, we're starting to do some international travel trips. And actually, Carrie Hansen, which is an Ag teacher out in Park City, Montana, had told us about a trip that she's going on, and she's going to Ireland. And we're like, wow, we really, we would love to join that trip. And so we looked up the information, and we actually, we got it all together. And so we are going to be traveling, hopefully, if it's approved, we'll be traveling with some of the other agriculture programs here across the state of Montana. Park City is going, Corvallis is going on this trip, as well as Ronan is also going, and hopefully, we'll be joining them. Right now, we have about 25 people signed up to go from our district. That includes myself and Cindy Arnott, another Ag teacher, as well as five parents. And we have 18 students who have already committed to going. A little bit about this trip, we're hoping to travel June 4th through the 13th, 2023. That is right after graduation for all of our seniors, so they will also be able to go. We're going to be spending 10 days over in Ireland, just kind of traveling around the country and checking out their different agricultural opportunities that they have over there, and the different forms of agriculture. The cost of this trip, I guess that's always a big question, is for each student, it's going to cost them about $4,500 to travel to Ireland, which is a pretty significant amount of money. But one program that we've started out at the Ag Center is we now offer a work-study program where students can work in the meat lab and get paid money working there and also earn a class credit. So what we're going to be doing is for those students going to Ireland, we're going to take that money and we're going to put it into a special account and put it right towards their trip. So they'll be able to pay for about half of the trip to Ireland through just working through the Ag Center. So we're trying to not have this trip limited to only students who can afford it. So every student who wants to go, we're finding a way to get them there if they don't have the financial ability to do that. So I guess that's just a quick little run over of this. I do have a lot of other information if you want more detailed information. But is there any questions about this trip?
Any trustee questions?
Not really questions, I think.
Yeah, go for it.
It's so cool that you're going at the same time as other kids from around the state. I think that's the neatest thing that I've heard, because kids who stay in that field are going to continue to, you know, potentially bump into each other and work together. And, you know, Montana's like a small town with long roads, and that's the most, I just have never heard of that before, and I absolutely love it. I also think it's just a really creative way of like having more people go, like it might even save some money, because it looks like it says in there somewhere that the number of students, the more the students, then the less the cost and all of that. And how creative to get students to be able to help pay for their trip by doing their work-study in class. And as we see a lot of proposals like this, and they're usually really well done, but those are just too creative ideas I've never seen before. I love it.
Yeah, we find that students really value the trip more if they have to contribute to it. If mom and dad are just paying for it, they don't really have the value, and they didn't put the sweat into earning that trip. So it was really important to us to tell our parents, we don't want you to pay for this trip. We want your students to earn the trip, whether it's working at a job outside of school or working in school or doing another fundraising opportunity.
Are there any other trustee questions? I guess my question is, is there a contingency, a trip insurance or something like that in case the world goes crazy again?
There is, in some of the documentation that I sent out. EF has done a lot with the COVID pandemic and really offering a lot of different insurance and ensuring that if something would happen, that they would handle it. During the COVID pandemic, when they did have students traveling, if they had a student get sick in another country, they flew the student's parents out to that country so that they could be with their student the whole time and then brought them back. So there's a lot of different things. That was a really important thing to me, to understand what their policies are before going into this trip. So yes, they do have it.
Any other trustee questions? Thank you very much. So this is a action item. The administration recommends that the trustees approve the out-of-country travel request. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Havens, second by trustee Wake. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Do we have any public comment? All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Christie, congratulations. Thanks for spending the time back there tonight. We appreciate your time very much. Thanks again.
Bye, Rob.
Rob, it's late, time to go home.